Welcome, everybody here today. We do have a full form present. Thank you for being here during this noon special meeting of the board. We have myself, Chair Benyon, Vice Chair Kathy Graves, or Catherine Graves, excuse me, Kathy Baker, Rob Clayton, and Liz Schwortl. We also have our Superintendent, Dr. Gwen Carol Holmes with us. Thank you all for being here, and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll start out with, are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to the agenda?
I have none.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move straight into item number three, consideration of support of proposed social hosting ordinance.
I had just had a question, clarification. Typically, we have a period of public comment, and I noticed that's not on our agenda. So kind of going back to the additions, correction, modifications, are we going to provide the opportunity should anybody wants a public comment?
Board, any discussion?
I'd be willing to take public comment.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to add public comment to the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have added public comment to the agenda. All right. Now, we will go ahead and move forward with item number three, consideration of support for proposed social hosting ordinance. And this, public comment first?
I don't know. I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
Do we even have a public comment?
Okay.
Usually, before we make decisions, we have public comment.
Modify the agenda, and I don't even know what I'm doing. Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll go ahead and take public comment at this time, and shift everything down one item number. So if you would please grab a microphone, state your name and address, and get you in the record.
I was gonna say, that's fine.
Right. Yeah.
I did that when in like seventh grade from my brother's belongings.
Anyway, I'm Stephanie Miller.
And you said address as well, physical?
City, state.
City and state is suffice.
Oh, Bellevue, I know. So my name's Stephanie. I am, I work directly with our youth in the valley through my role as the Programs Director of the Drug Coalition and a social worker in our community. And I work specifically with substance use in our teens. And I first wanted to thank you all for considering supporting the social hosting ordinance. As my role in the Drug Coalition, we've done a lot of surveys and community meetings and see that there is this major issue in our valley for our kids using alcohol specifically, substances in general, but alcohol specifically for this ordinance. And we believe that this ordinance is just a piece of the puzzle to decrease those numbers. And I've provided Kathy with all of those survey numbers that we have from 2012 and this past year. And we do see that our usage rates are declining with some of the things that we've been doing to decrease availability. And a lot of our youth are saying that this is where we get alcohol, from people over 21 or from parties. And so we believe that this is, again, just one piece of that puzzle to decrease those numbers, to decrease the availability, and to also educate, an opportunity to educate the community on the developing brain and how scary that is for our kids to then put substances at a really critical time in their lives. So thank you for having me here, and I look forward to hearing the discussion.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will now move forward into newly item four, which is a consideration of support for proposed social hosting ordinance. And in your packets, I'd ask Heather Crocker to begin drafting a letter after our last board meeting, regular board meeting, where we had expressed interest in doing that. That way, we could have something to go off of. So there is a letter in your packet, and I will go ahead and open it up for discussion at this time.
Well, I'd like to comment on this because, you know, I worked closely with Heather on this letter, and it is meant to be a tool from a starting point of a conversation. It's not meant to be the end-all, be-all. But just in taking information from our discussions, as well as surveys that the district has done, and facts that we know about use, and kind of framing that in what our responsibility as a board is, and how we can contribute to supporting our community at whole to provide a healthy and safe environment for our kids. And I think it's important to realize that these are numbers that the kids are telling us, as well as the parents, and that that need exists. And as leaders in our community, where one-third of our entire community is connected to us in some way, I think it's very important that we seriously consider making a public statement. Because the other issue that I think is really important is, if we're not, what is that silence telling people? When it is our job working with the parents and kids. I mean, our vision and our direction of Blaine County School District is such an integral part of our community. And I have more to say, but I'll wait till later.
Good. Any further discussion?
Did everybody read this?
This letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Trusty Graves.
So I personally support an ordinance or something similar to what has been written. It is my understanding from the meeting that Gwen Carol and I went to, and it was reminded by a comment that we received, that the ordinance is not finalized yet. So I wonder if it wouldn't be prudent for us to wait till we have a final ordinance before we support something, or we consider, you know, we can still consider, we can think about it. I don't feel like there is a rush to do it because we don't have the finalized ordinance. It, I know that from the meeting we went to, it's been looked at by a couple of other attorneys, and the wording could change on it. So I guess, although I said I do personally support the ordinance, I think it might be prudent just to wait until there's a finalized version.
Will our endorsement have any impact on the approval of that ordinance? If we come out and order and say, yes, we support the moving forward of this or not? Is there any, will we have an impact, do you think?
I don't, I don't know. You know, possibly, you know, we might. It's hard to tell. You know, from the meeting that we went to, it seemed like the three commissioners who were voting on this were all supportive in some fashion. That's, that's what I heard. The one comment was from Jacob Greenberg, and he wanted, although he was in support of it, he did have some questions because he had some other attorneys look at it. So he didn't, he came out and said, I'm not against this. So I, I think they are already in support, something like this, but they're waiting. Is that what you heard, Dr. Holmes?
That's what I heard, and I was just gonna add to the conversation that you could, you don't have to come out and say you support this ordinance. You can say it's the concept of this ordinance. I mean, that's what I tried to communicate in my comments, and my own support is that I support the concept of not allowing adults to do social hosting, because that decreases the regularity with which kids come into contact with alcohol. And that is what has been shown, both in cognitive functioning and in just pictures of the brain, to impact the development of the adolescent brain. So don't want to tell parents how to raise their kids.
Right.
But do want to say to the community, it's not okay for anybody else's kids to be served alcohol by you, and it's not okay for, to have it on a regular basis. Because in these studies, a regular basis is alcohol consumption once a week is enough to impact the alcohol.
Well, and, and I do agree with what you just said, and the last sentence of this is, please pass the social ordinance. You could say, please pass a social ordinance. And I don't think it's, it's our job to wordsmith. I mean, they're the legislators, they're gonna be doing that part. It's, it's more of a function, not just saying this to the commissioners, which that next meeting is where this could be read, as a board, that we are supporting social hosting ordinance. And I think that that's where they're gonna have people from the community, and I know Chris Koch has gone on board and said that Bellevue is supporting this, and they're gonna look at, basically taking the similar ordinance for the city of Bellevue, where we have a school. And so I think it would be very easy to tweak this, to say, we're supporting what you guys as experts are gonna be putting together and putting forth that's enforceable, that's understood, that's well-vetted because of the people involved with writing it, which it's been in the process for five years, just kind of FYI, they've been writing it for five years. So passing a social ordinance and supporting that doesn't tie us to the language that's currently there, because it may not change. It could be exactly the same, or it could be wordsmithed a little bit and really not change it a whole lot. And I don't think it's our job to worry about that. Do we support the principle? So.
Okay. I have one more comment.
Yeah. The way I would look at, the way I do look at this is that this is simply an ordinance that's being put together that actually upholds and supports the existing laws of the state of Idaho, and that we should come out in support of any ordinance that helps to dissuade or keep out the influence of alcohol or drugs in minor youth, which is the law. So I think that there's no danger, fear, or, I think it's the right thing to do, actually, because all we're doing is encouraging them to come up with, craft a way to enable them to enforce the laws that currently do exist. That's what this is. I don't see as a, I don't see any downside to this, any way, shape, or form.
Yeah. Well, and just a couple of other interesting facts to kind of put it all into perspective. And this was part of the asset survey that was done of students in 2014. Your parents or guardians host parties with alcohol for you and your friends. Thirteen percent of kids that were seniors said that that happened. But this is a more interesting stat. Parents allow you to attend parties where alcohol is available to you. Fifty percent of kids that were seniors said, yes, that happens. And when they're asked, how, how much do you feel like your parents would, how do your, how wrong parents feel for you to drink one or two drinks every day? Not at all, or just a little bit wrong? Twenty percent of kids said their parents would be okay with that. And forty-three percent are reporting binge drinking in the last three days, which is five or more drinks at one time. So I mean, clearly, there's this feeling that kids think that parents are endorsing it, or they're okay with it. Some, not all, but some. And so I think that is, it's reported in the culture, and our parents are telling us that they feel it's a concern. Our students are telling us this is how they're, they're accessing alcohol. And like, again, going back to it's a tool, among many tools, and, you know, supporting that tool to support our kids when the kids are identifying that this is an issue for them, I think is important as a district.
Sorry, I'm trying to get the words. It's just, yeah, it's just kind of felt hurt. And I can just hold up.
The fact they're so forthcoming.
Yeah.
Is almost a sign of asking for help.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep. So what?
Okay, Trusty Schortle.
No, I, my, I actually, I agree with Catherine. I don't know if that's your stance, but what you brought up, because I think that the devil's in the details, and we need to know what the final wording is. I had a couple of people say, oh, our parents are gonna get hauled off. And I think that this, we live in a community and a state that is, you know, has quite a bit of a libertarian side to it, and I think that we need to see what we're endorsing and not just pass that on to another government agency. I trust them. I think it's gonna be basically the same, but I don't know that for sure. So I can't, I wanna, I wanna have in writing what I am agreeing to sync up with what I think I'm agreeing to.
My only response to that would be that the county commission is having this meeting in January, asking for the community to provide feedback. And we are an important body in that community. I mean, we impact more people than anyone. And to be silent on a topic like this, I think is not the direction we should go. I mean, I think it's important that we are very vocal as to where we stand on this issue, and that we're supporting them so that they know that, that we agree that it's an important issue that needs to be addressed and put into place.
That's what I want to hear. That is what I want to hear, is we know this is an important issue that needs to be addressed. That's not being silent, in my mind.
Yeah.
But what it is doing is doing our due diligence that we're, we're not here, I wouldn't expect the county commissioners to give us kind of a blanket authority to go ahead and write something that they didn't know exactly. It's like signing a contract, you say, well, this is basically what it's gonna say, but you're not entirely sure. And as I said, I trust them, but I think a comment just like you just made, this is an important issue that needs to be addressed, that does our due diligence in terms of, yes, we do care about the details of this. It doesn't say that we're gonna haul up, haul people off. It is a misdemeanor. It's, it's a slap on the wrist, basically, but it sends a message, which is what we want. But we, we don't have that for sure yet. I wish we did.
Well, how is that different than what's in the letter? I mean, if we changed it to pass a social ordinance as opposed to the social ordinance, we're saying that we agree with this as, as an issue.
So because a social ordinance, hosting ordinance, could, the devil's in the details. He could say anything. It could say, you know, you gotta go to jail for it or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, so what we want, we want, I want people to make, I wanna make sure that people know that I know exactly what I'm agreeing to. And actually, this, the reason I feel like I really am paying attention to this is, we had an issue with the drug testing, you know, the board, the drug testing issue, and that, I felt that I didn't think that through in terms of details very well. And I heard, I heard from the community that I hadn't really thought my way through that. So that's, I think that where I'm coming from is I wanna make sure that I, you know, like I said, I loved your, I love that way that you just said it about, we see a need, a strong need to address, you know, we just wanna see the details, and we're supportive of the concept. You know, I think that's where I'm headed.
Trusty Graves.
Catherine had it before I did.
And then, I'll say what you said.
What I would say then, maybe we could leave this meeting with just a motion saying that we're in full support of the crafting of a social hosting ordinance, and we would love to endorse the final copy upon receipt. That would be a strong statement from us, simple in the meeting the needs of everybody.
Well.
Trusty Graves.
We will all be meeting on January 6th, which will be before the 12th, which I believe is the, the 13th is the county commissioners', that's gonna be the open meeting for the public, is on January 13th. And I believe we will all be getting together on the 6th, and that could be, you know, another, you know, the final touch on this, and hopefully, by then, there would be the final ordinance that's crafted. I think, I mean, as it sounds like, we're all supportive of this.
Yeah. We're pretty much on the same page.
Yeah, I think we're, we're all on the same page, but just getting that final, the final copy.
I agree with Kathy that we should come out with some position, right? Organizational position, and then.
Yes.
To qualify it is fine.
Yeah.
Because this is true. We don't have the true language.
Right.
And there may be something in there, and we're constituents of it, too, and we, we just sign up and say, hey, go for it, guys.
Yeah.
That's not, that, that would be improving.
Well, and I think that the, this letter tries to frame that positional, that position.
I haven't read through the whole thing.
And I think that we can change just a couple of the words in here to talk, make it more, that we're supporting the ordinance, or the.
Creation.
Creation of the ordinance, and that it be, you know, in our community, without having to endorse the specific language. And I think we can make those, those changes pretty simply. And I do think it would be important for a board representative to go to that meeting, read a letter, and I think something more than just a simple statement, but framing it in, you know, our vision, direction, how this impacts students, what we know from our own organization, what we know because, you know, facts of our community, and why it's important to us, like this letter is attempting to do. But, you know, we can nuance that to, to, I think, make everybody, to represent our, our voice as one.
I would agree with that. I think we need to come out with a strong voice against social hosting. And I think in order to assist with the county commissioners and our stance, I think we need to have numbers behind it and back it up with why we think, and the effects it has on kids for their education, and, and come out at that route. Because that's really what it, what it ties us to, is, is how's it affect the kids and their future.
That's a good point. Make sure that that's spread and centered. So it seems that it's appropriate for us to be doing this.
Yeah. And that's what this letter is attempting to do, is to frame it into the impact of our community and our responsibilities as a board, and our connection to students and that.
Put this together, it's a great letter.
Heather and I worked together on it.
If I'm clear, right now, we're not taking any action. We're just all saying we support this, and at, at the 13th, we will be reading and coming out with our position on this.
Yeah, or I think we, one of us could make a motion saying, look, we're in full support of the social hosting ordinance creation, and that we will be open to fully endorsing this upon the delivery of a final copy to our organization.
Do you wanna say that again and make that motion?
That's recorded, I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Your second.
I will second that motion, Rob.
Pardon?
I will second that motion.
All right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to, as stated by.
It's in the, it's in the record. My green light's on.
Play back the tape.
All right. And then we'll try and schedule one of us to be at that county commissioners' meeting on the 13th, in order to, to read that into the record for the county commissioners'. And on to item newly five, the Strategic Planning Steering Committee appointments. And you have a couple different things in your packets as well. Lori got them to you last night, as far as a list of names, as well as their applications to, beyond the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. Also, in your packets, you have a table created by Dr. Holmes to, who's already been currently appointed to that committee via the superintendent, as well as, there's two trustees to serve on the steering committee. And if I am correct in my recollection, the two trustees that serve on the committee will only appoint one parent or community member. The other three who do not serve on the steering committee will appoint a second parent or community member. Am I remembering correctly?
That's what the plan that you approved says? I have it right here if you need it.
Okay. Sounds good. And with that, I will go ahead and open it up for any discussion. I think, first of all, we ought to figure out which trustees are gonna serve on the, on the steering committee, and I will open that up for discussion. Trusty Graves.
First, Gwen Carol, can I have a, just a review of the roles.
Of the steering committee?
Of the steering committee members?
Sure.
And that obviously is for all the members?
Mm-hmm.
And when the meetings would be, and just to give a little bit of a, a review of that.
Okay. The first steering committee meeting is scheduled for January 8th, and that's the organizational meeting, which, one of the things we need to decide today is that if all of the trustees would like to also attend that organizational meeting, which you're very welcome to, we just need to notice it. So we just need to have a heads-up to make sure that that happens. But that would be the organizational meeting. A little bit different than the last time around, if my understanding is correct, since I wasn't here the last time around.
Hold on, excuse me, Gwen, what time in?
Four o'clock. We're having all of the meetings at four o'clock in the afternoon, so that it's as friendly as possible for people to be able to participate.
What was that date again? I'm sorry.
January 8th, 4:00 p.m. That gets them ready for the following week when Daniel Pink is here, because that would be their first meeting after getting organized, would be with Daniel Pink. The steering committee will be a part of the group that meets with him after the public conversation type of thing. So then, there, then there's that week of meetings all over everywhere for staff and community. I think we've figured out now that there's 13 meetings during each of those weeks, that we have one of those opportunities for public input into the plan. And then they would, I'm guessing, we'll see what happens on January 8th, I'm guessing that among themselves, they would try to divvy up those meetings and attend as many as possible, but not have everybody on the committee go to every meeting. So if you're on the committee, you might go to two, and you'd go to two, and so forth and so on. Then the next go-around for them would be, on February 19th, would be their next meeting. Here's the role of the steering committee, which I think it needs to be extremely clear, is that they are tasked with taking all of the feedback we get from the community, first through the brainstorming public meetings, where everybody throws ideas on the table or on chart paper and see what sticks. Then that is loaded into a survey that is pushed out to the community, for the community to help us prioritize. And as they help us prioritize, then we take that data back to the steering committee, and they are tasked with using that data to develop, first of all, the educational value statements that we have as a community.
Okay, hold on. Develop educational values.
Value statements, and a district mission. That's the first round. And they would be working on that February 19th. But I think the important piece that needs to be communicated to everyone is that they do this based on the results that come back to them.
Yes.
Not they sit down as a group of 18 people and decide what it should be. They're kind of like the researchers that have to have the, develop the findings from all the data that's come back. And, which is why we're asking the community to help us prioritize, because we already know we're not going to be able to include everybody's wants in this plan. It's just a reality.
Okay.
All right. So then we go through the second round, where we're getting all of the data from, or all the brainstorming from the community on what they think should be our vision and our goals.
Wait, wait, say that again.
Vision and goals.
Then we go back for vision and goals to the community.
Right, right. So that's the week of February 22nd through, or, excuse me, 23rd through 27th, where we have another round of 13 meetings. So anybody and everybody is invited to come somewhere and give us their feedback. Then we push the survey out, so the community can help us prioritize our goals. And then the steering committee meets again on March 18th. And, once again, they are looking at the data, the feedback, and determining from that data, what are gonna be our goals. And we'll see how the data cuts itself out. So are we gonna have three goals, or we're gonna have four goals, or we're gonna have two? Because you'll be able to see by the community prioritizing, that there's just a natural break here, and that's where you say, okay, these are the goals.
So they're gonna figure out the goals.
From that data.
The steering committees.
Right. They don't sit down and say, what should our goals be? They use the feedback from the community.
Okay.
For what should our goals be. All right. Then we break into subcommittees. So the steering committee splits itself up, we add more folks to each of those subcommittees, experts in whatever the area is that have been identified as goals, and they start writing action plans. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Then those action plans go back out to the community for the third round of community meetings, which has in May, the week of May 18th. And the community, anybody and everybody, 13 meetings once again, gets to provide feedback to those subcommittees on the action plans that they wrote for achieving the goals. Did you think about this? Why are we doing that? I think we should, whatever. And then that feedback all goes back to the subcommittees. They review the feedback and revise the action steps as appropriate. And then you guys bless the final plan, or revise it. So I think that's, an important thing is for the, the steering committee to know what their role is. They're not coming up with ideas and things on their own. They're not coming up with ideas and things on their own, they're coming up with it from the data that comes back. And so everybody on the steering committee could play multiple roles, just because of the fact that we're all parents, we're all community members, we're all, a lot of us are employees type of thing, but each person will have a specific lens that they are tasked to be looking through as they help the steering committee. So if you're Debbie, who's sitting in the audience, her lens is to look at this through the instructional lens as a cabinet member who's in the instructional realm, okay?
Trusty Baker.
Lori, do you have the original applications? Because Kate Wilhe, there's an arrow on the bottom of her application implying that it could be on the back, and there's nothing on the back of this one.
Should you have that? I do have that. I'll rather than get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen Carroll, that was, that was a big help.
Okay, and also, as a review, the parents in the plan that we approved, it was noted to try to get them representing different schools, areas of the county, as well as the five community stakeholders, one appointment per trustee, each trying to represent a different stakeholder group, such as government, nonprofit, business, et cetera, so we get a broad spectrum of the, of the county and of the district.
We don't have zones that these people come from, unfortunately, or even addresses to know.
That was one comment I had, it would be nice to have a
Is to know
Little checkbox for what zone you're from, so
Yeah, you would have
It'd be nice to pick a constituent from our zone if we had the opportunity.
Yeah, but unfortunately, that wasn't part of the application process, so.
With that, I'll go ahead and open it up for the discussion on the two trustees that will be serving on the strategic planning steering committee.
Does anybody want to do it?
I would like to do it.
I would like, I feel I have the time and would like to do it as well.
Thank you both, I didn't know if I had
I'm not going to be able to do it.
With the meetings in the evenings, I feel that I can do that.
I'm either way.
That was like, thank you. Let the record show.
Yeah, I mean, I was pretty neutral, so if you two both want to do it, that's, that's fine, I could have gone either way.
Oh, yeah, and I'm wondering if, thinking if, it's, they're going to be public meetings, so if either one of us can't show up, maybe you can, is there, is there any way to have a backup person that would represent a board?
I'm glad to be on the bench.
On the bench?
Glad to be there.
Yeah.
Would that be possible, Gwen Carroll?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this committee doesn't have all the, it's not an elected position, it's an appointed position, so you don't have all those stipulations on it. So you could certainly say, I'm unable to attend tonight, I've got the flu. Catherine, would you attend for me?
Yeah, alternate. Okay, that solves that problem.
So can I make a motion?
I would be glad to contribute in that fashion.
Perfect.
Do we need to motion this, or do we just do it? For the appointment?
I think you just do it.
Okay. So Sean and Liz?
I and Liz will do that, as appointed by ourselves.
By the board?
All right, and then
I just want to be clear, since I missed your discussion, Sean and Liz
Yeah, will be the two trustees.
Number one, two, okay.
And also, already on the committee, we have the superintendent, Dr. Holmes. Our first and second cabinet members are Ms. Debbie Guknik and Mr. Howard Royal. Our two school administrators are Mr. Haisley and Mr. Peck. Elementary school teacher is Aden Sanchez from Altarus. Middle school teacher is Jonah Torseth, and the high school teacher is Marie Wolfram. And so with that, we also have the union involved, as well as representation from five of our schools.
We're missing Bellevue and Haley.
Mm-hmm. So, as we make our appointments, go ahead and please keep that in mind. So, Trusty Graves, Trusty Clayton, and Trusty Baker, have you thought or considered who you would be appointing for your parent position?
Yes. Wesley DeClos?
I wanted that one.
Oh, if you want that one, I could pick somebody else.
No, that's really great you said that, because as I looked through it, I, like, I don't know many people on here.
Yeah.
But I just like the fact he's got a K through five kids, so he's going to be vested in the plan, because it's going to, his kid's early in the system, or kids, and his background looked really good, so.
Yeah. Well, did you have another person? Because I have other people, if you wanted to take that one, I would defer to
He was the strongest one I could find from the parents.
Because I know a lot of people on the list.
I don't know anybody, and I just took him for what his application had on it, and he made me feel good that I actually made a good pick.
Well, I defer if you wish to take him.
I'll take that pick.
Okay. Okay, give me a second to make a choice on my second, if you want to go, Catherine.
Nope, go ahead.
No, I'm still, I need to process on between my second and third, so go ahead.
I would like to, my, you know, this was actually, we had an amazing response
We did.
For our applicants. We had 22 responses, I don't know if you all know that, we had 22 responses, and really, and I'm not just saying this, any one of these people would be great on the committee. They are all very strong. I did a whole, sort of, you know, went through everybody on here and where their kids went to school. I in fact knew everyone, a couple of the people I had met only a couple times, and I would appoint that, you know, everybody was amazing. So I'm really having a tough time, because I know so many people would be
Fantastic.
Fantastic, and able to do this role, and that's why, you know, I wanted to clarify that with Gwen Carroll, so, and I was prepared for one pick, and now I'm, I need to have two picks, so, yeah, which is great, so Catherine, you're more of a decision maker than I am.
You don't have your first pick to go?
Nope, not yet.
All right, I will go pick Kristen Anderson.
As a parent rep?
As a parent rep, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Cross that off your list.
Do we know what schools these, people have children in?
She's six through 12 on her application list. She has
She has two, one in middle school, one in high school.
And what about Wesley's child?
One in elementary and
Do you have that?
Haley. Haley, yeah, it's Haley.
Thank you, and then two in community.
We need a Bellevue, somebody.
And they also have community school kids, so private school representation, perspective.
I have a pick.
Yeah.
Okay, for a community member, okay?
Yep, Carol Freund. Does she represent any nonprofits, government? Help us out, let's try to make sure She's business owner, she is Okay. About parents of a minority.
I have a community pick. I'll go with Mike Birchmore.
Who also is nonprofit?
He represents the nonprofit.
Yeah, nonprofit.
Blaine County Rec.
And I think he has one child at community, one in public
Yes.
One in middle school.
From the Bellevue area, not necessarily Bellevue Elementary, her, I think her kids are a little older, but I believe Penny Thayer is from the Bellevue area.
Haley.
She's Haley.
Oh, she's Haley? Okay.
Remember, you guys can also recruit yourselves. Unfortunately, no Hispanic.
Applicants?
Yeah.
Are you picking Penny, or are you just commenting about her location?
I just comment about the location for now.
There is one person from down there, and that's the Bellevue, that's great.
Carrie already has quite a bit of representation, if I'm going to be on there, Howie Royal also lives down, and Carrie and John Peck from Carrie Elementary as well, so I think we want to keep a broad range from the entire district. So, but, I think I will go ahead and put Penny Thayer as that, as my community member pick. And it brings us to the last few picks.
Catherine, you have two left.
Surprise, surprise.
There is an application in here from higher education, there's a woman from CSI who has an application.
Okay, sorry.
I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there as diversity of background for potential candidates, I don't know if anyone's interested in her, but, I don't, I have no background in her, so I have no idea.
I will choose, let me just look here.
Just a point of interest, is Aden Sanchez in the dual immersion program, or is that Altarus, I would assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was actually a question I had, too.
He's the Spanish speaker.
Yes, he's a Spanish.
Does, maybe Heather, you know, is there anybody on this list here that has someone in dual immersion?
I know Penny Thayer.
Well, oh, that's right, Penny Thayer does, that's right, she has two kids that have gone through the program.
And she says she's a small business owner, so that gives us two businesses.
Yeah.
As well as she was a liaison for Latino families.
Okay. I will choose Daryl Fouth as my parent, who has someone in middle school, high school, and is a business owner, he is, I think, part owner of American Title, which I think is good, he has his sort of hand in the real estate business here, and growth of the community, you know, decrease in the community.
So that's your parent, Daryl, please.
And I, I like Rob's points about Hallie Kelly.
Hallie Starr.
Hallie Starr, because she will be looking at it, she works with a lot of the kids from, that come from our high school.
That's your other pick?
Yep.
Do we have anybody representing the Ketchum end of our valley?
Where's Birchmore, is he from up there?
He's from up north.
Does he live north?
I think so.
You know, to be honest, out of the 22, there are only
Two.
I was going to say Lyman Drake lives
Lyman lives up there, Julie Dollard lives up there.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess I'm last. What are the odds of that, right?
It's not like you, Catherine.
Well, I was holding back, I already had my choice, I was just waiting, letting Catherine go. I am going to appoint Lyman Drake.
Perfect.
Yep. I just saw him coming out of the senior projects, but also a nonprofit representative?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so by all appearances, we have our steering committee appointed. Lori, would you please let the people know that have been appointed, and also attach a letter to everyone thanking them for their interest, like Catherine said, we had 22 applicants to be on the strategic planning steering committee, and we're grateful for all the offerings and the support that the district or the constituents are giving for our students, so thank you very much. And with that, I see nothing further on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll sit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 12:45.